Call to order, the September 18th meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. Mr. May, would you please ... Okay, public comment, this time is for the information, it's for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Due to the fact that we have these four major fires around us, I would like to have the board actively do everything they can to stop H.R. 6596 from humping this building. We don't need to add more to the control of the federal government, we need to take less away from ... If you combine all the four fires just in our area, you can drive from Weaverville to the top of the Tehachapi Mountains and have a one-mile-wide strip of land burned to the ground. If you take all the fires in California for this year alone, you can drive from Oregon border to the Mexican border and have a three-mile-wide strip of land, which is the size of Delaware. Somehow, we need to stop this practice. And the car fire, the $200 million that they spent on the car fire, they could have hired 4,000 seasonal employees for 26 weeks at $50 an hour and to work on that area, they would have been responsible for cleaning 100 square feet per hour. It had been a lot better and easier to do than burning it to the ground. We have, somehow, we have to do something to change the way we fight fires. I understand that the woods need to be burned, but we used, when I was a teenager, we used to do it in January, February, when there's snow on the ground. We need to get rid of the practice that we're doing today and do something that is functional and good for the environment.
Lisa Barrow from Hayfork. Today I want to talk about using incentives to encourage and protect legacy farmers in the Hayfork Water District. So far, the cannabis ordinances have pushed farmers out of Hayfork, not because they polluted a creek or used dangerous chemicals or caused a scene, but because the cost and weight of the regulation is too onerous. So how can we stop this devastation? How can we keep families in Hayfork? How can we use, how can we invite more families to come to Hayfork? We need to use incentives to encourage and protect legacy farmers in the Hayfork Water District. Let's create a type H license for Hayfork. A type H license would be good for a cottage grow on all parcels, two acres or more, in the Hayfork Water District. With no water board and no SEACR required, this license will protect our environment while creating small industry. Make it very inexpensive, maybe 100 bucks. Streamline the process, a fast track to small commerce in Hayfork with no residency requirement, no caps, no deadlines. These incentives might entice some of the cannabis experience and knowledge to stay in Hayfork. The big cannabis farms need a trained workforce, and we have one, but this transition will take time. People need to buy groceries and pay bills while we wait for the industry to develop in Hayfork. By allowing the carve-outs in the first place, this board has already shown its willingness to create special arbitrary rules. Create a type H license in Hayfork. 25 plants in the Hayfork Water District. And make them visible. Get rid of the plastic and the privacy fences. A friend of mine told me about attending the Plasterville Garden Crawl. Once a year, gardeners share their gardens with the public. Let's do that. Let's create a collection of small artisan gardens in Hayfork. Keep the brain trust in town. Keep the schools open and thriving. Keep the Rotary Center open. Keep the restaurants open. Encourage people all over the world to drive our curvy roads to Hayfork to see our tiny garden town. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Good morning. Lisa Wright from Lewiston, and I'm here today to address the state of the Trinity County Cannabis Program. I've been kind of on the front lines here for the last six months or so, working with companies, with businesses, with farmers, representing a good chunk of the licensed cultivators here in Trinity County. And I really see four different issues that I'd like you to address. Number one is the ad hoc. I mean, come on, folks, we're no longer an ad hoc. We're over a year. This board has allowed two members to completely control all of the ordinance development and now ongoing amendments on all of these ordinances. It needs to stop. There needs to be public participation. Need to dissolve the ordinance, the ad hoc, and allow a standing committee to be formed, which is what should have been done back when the urgency ordinance failed and the ad hoc's role was really completed. Number two, keep it simple. Adopt the state regs. I see these lengthy, burdensome ordinances coming out with all these different requirements, and half the time, your staff can't keep up with that. They don't know what's going on either. Adopt the state regs. I had provided to the ad hoc a sample, it's probably like four pages, complete ordinance that addressed all elements. It was endorsed by the California Cannabis Industry Association. Simplify it. Adopt the state regs. Get away from all this, all these tangled, this tangled web of bureaucracy, which really leads to my third point, the messy bureaucracy that we have. The cannabis division within the planning department is really struggling. I don't think that they're properly funded. I mean, you have clerks that are validating, is this an authentic signature? Oh, I need another piece of ID. I don't really know if this is notarized, copy is good enough. Oh, you know, I think we need to have this additional requirement that doesn't even fall within the state or any county code. I'm not blaming those people. I don't think they've been properly empowered, and that has been a properly funded program, which leads me to my fourth point. Where's the money? Where is the money from all the permit fees? We haven't seen any kind of public accounting whatsoever, unless I missed it somehow. Where is that money? Where's the money that's been put aside for the general fund? Should be up to close to a million over this last three years with the fees that goes into that. Where is the money for the general fund plan update? Where's the money that's supposed to all go by state law back into the cannabis program to administer the ordinances here? It's really a mess. And what's happening is millions of dollars are walking away from this county because of the state that we're in. It could be simplified. Make it a standing committee. Allow public participation input. Streamline the process. Adopt the state regs. Come up with one overall ordinance. Reduce that messy bureaucracy. If you have a simplified streamlined ordinance, you won't have these kind of things happening at the cannabis division. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? With that, come to our presentations. We have, we'll receive an update regarding the car fire.
I guess I'm not supposed to touch that.
It's a strong mic, it'll pick you up anyway.
Very good. That's good to know. So anytime we have a town meeting, it's always you have to have a microphone right there. It's disconcerting. But anyway, good morning. My name is Joe Smales. For those who do not know me, I'm the district ranger for the Trinity River Management Unit here in Weaverville, part of the Shasta Trinity. I've been here since February, and what a, what a wake-up call for this year in terms of fire. So I would like to give an update on the Delta Fire. Also have a little information also on the Curlin and Hurst Fire, if you like that. So we are looking at containment, starting with the Delta Fire, looking at containment tomorrow. It could be tonight, but I feel more confident that it's going to be tomorrow. We're looking at just a little more than 60,000 acres on the Delta Fire. As you well know, it grew from day one about 10,000 acres, and then day two, it went to 16,000 acres, and that was in 10 hours. It was just a big blow up. And so, as it stands today, it's just a little above, a little above 60,000 acres. We are looking at going into control with the Shasta Trinity, a type III organization. Our current Cal Team Four, interagency team, will demo this coming Monday. Okay, today's Tuesday, next Monday. That will be their last day, of course. People are wondering what time that will be, 6 o'clock in the morning. We have a Coffee Creek satellite camp on the west side. We also have our main camp on the McLeod side. The reason why we have two camps, two incident team camps, is just because the geography and logistics lend itself towards having our firefighters resourced on the Coffee Creek side. It made sense because the west side was very active about, I would say, eight, nine days ago. Those of you who have a telephone knows that we do not have very good communication, and there was a lot of disconcerting news coming to me that there was no, there was no firefighting efforts at that time. I think we're talking about last Thursday, a week ago. So the presence did come in in force, and so, right now, on the west side, on the Coffee Creek side, things are looking good. We are in full suppression repair mode. Not suppression activity, there's a difference. Suppression activity is building fire line, building concession contingency lines, managing the fire, fighting the fire, keeping it within the perimeter. So right now, that is not needed, although there are a few indications of hot spots, but they're very minor. We are in repair mode. Repair is repairing the dozer lines or hand lines that have been created to be sure that we don't have excessive erosion when the rains come. When they do come, that is oftentimes a very significant problem of having these soil resources washed down the creek, and we don't want that. And so, we are in repair mode at this time, both hand line and dozer lines on the west side. And I should say, all throughout the fire area, perimeter area, even on the east side, the I-5 area, that is going on as well. Would also like to report, it's a close call. We did have a rotor hit one of our helicopters. Big Sikorskis with a snorkel hit a tree and broke off two feet of the rotor blade. They were able to safely land, and of course, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage. Those rigs are very, very expensive. But the good news is, there were no injuries, no resource damage as well. So that was a close call. That happened yesterday around 2:00. We did have some neighborhood meetings with the Coffee Creek folks, and the reason why there were some complaints coming in, I wouldn't say undue complaints, just complaint after complaint about the traffic, the noise, and so we had some neighborhood meetings. There was one at 10:00 on Sunday, which we had 10 show up, and gave them a tour of the base camp, fed lunch, and they felt much better after the meeting. We did have 7:00, 7:00 P.M. meetings for the last three nights, in which we've had no one show up, so we consider that success. We figured that we've met some of their concerns, if not all of their concerns. We are real sensitive about the sentiment towards the firefighting force. We are the guests, and we sincerely feel that way. We are there for a reason, and that is to suppress the fire and manage the resources as well. But we also want to get along with the neighborhood in which we situate ourselves. So we have another meeting at 7:00 P.M. tonight. Our last breakfast will be tomorrow. Wednesday morning, they'll start breaking down camp in Coffee Creek tomorrow afternoon. So in effect, that's good news, because we feel we have the confidence in order to do that. And McLeod camp will still be enforced. They will still, we will still have presence there till next Monday. Just for an update, the Curlin fire is also in full repair mode. Looking at 1,800 acres. Also, the Hurst fire, as it stands, at 46,000 acres. That is in full repair mode as well. So we don't want to be overconfident, but we are, we are seeing that things are looking better. If we are in repair mode, that speaks for itself that we have enough black line around the perimeter, somewhere around 100 to 200 feet, which we're feeling pretty good about that. So is there any questions for me?
Thank you.
Structures, did we lose, there's rumors, there were some cabins that were lost on the ...
On the Delta?
On the Delta, on the Trinity.
Yes, there was, on the east side. I don't have that count, but on the west side, haven't heard any Keith on the west side, but on the east side, there were structures.
And nothing in High and Palm?
Nothing High and Palm, to my, to my report, no.
We, I personally want to thank you for the works to save my properties and all my neighbors in Anderson County. Appreciate all your hard work and all over the country that were there working to save our county.
I appreciate that, and I should say that as these firefighters leave, I don't leave, I'm here. I have responsibility for the management of this property, and I take that very seriously. As mentioned in the town meeting, which, it was a real good town meeting that we had in Trinity Center, and I enjoyed that. I enjoy engaging the landowners and whoever comes. It's actually one of the, even though it's a difficult time for people, I love to talk to people about what we do and about maybe what we should improve on doing as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
And you'll find that anytime we have a meeting in Trinity Center, we get at least 75 to 100 people that just love to show up.
You got it. Take it really much.
All right. All right, on to the concession calendar. These items include routine uncontroversial matters that will be acted upon by the board on one vote call motion. A member of the board's staff or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Mr. May, do you have anything today?
No, I do not.
Mr. Finley? Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chabot? 215?
And I have 215. Anything from staff? From the public?
I'd like to call 2.13.
That's already been called, but anything? Anything else? All right, I had to entertain a motion.
So may I approve the, accept an approval incentive that has presented?
Second. Supervisor Morris? Yes. Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chabot? Supervisor May?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye. All right, on item 2.13, approve a board response of the following grand jury reports, 2017, 2018, Trinity County Grand Jury Report, 2017, 18, oh one, continuing report. We'll start with Supervisor Chabot's question.
So on the grand jury report, there was a couple things, Terry, that they addressed in regards to the penal code versus our Trinity County policy statement number 390. And in the penal code, there were multiple things, specifically, item number three, I'm trying to pull it up, that we don't have, and other timeframes and specific things. And I was wondering how you came to the conclusions that our penal code, our policy and the penal code were similar.
Actually, I'm trying to pull it up also. I didn't feel there were, okay, now I see where I said it, okay. I didn't feel there was a significant difference, the two, from what our policy had said that we had to do things in a certain, I mean, the penal code isn't exact, and our policy isn't exactly matching the penal code, but in essence, it does. It's telling us to explain things, to, if there's something that needs to be done, it needs to be implemented, you're supposed to give a timeframe. And so, it was, our policy was older, and my response was that it should, the recommendation was that it had not been implemented, but it should be implemented. So, I mean, I think that they say the same thing, and it just needed to be updated. I don't really, if you read my response, I disagreed wholly on what the effect is. There was no, like, we still had to do the same thing, it's just the verbiage wasn't perfect, so I said we just need to update the policy, make the changes.
So are you recommending that the grand jury adopt the penal code?
I said the recommendation was, I felt they were both saying the same thing, but there could be some verbiage that should be updated. So I feel they're doing the same thing, but the verbiage needed to be changed to be, you know, to be correct, so.
So I guess I'm not following what your recommendation is, what, because it says ...
It said that it should be updated. It says, I feel they're both saying the same thing, but there is some verbiage that should be updated.
Okay.
So I do agree that it needs to be updated, but I feel that they weren't saying the same thing.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, and I think that that's where the verbiage comes into play here, but from what I could read and from what I read through the policy, and I read the entire, entire penal code, and I read what we're saying, I felt that they're the same thing, it's just there's some verbiage that needs to be updated. It's very lawyer-esque, is kind of what I felt.
And I agree, the other one is, ours is old, and there were some specific things in the penal code, and I agree on the verbiage, specifically when it comes to parameters of time-sensitive things. And so, did you want to put a time on, recommend a timeframe?
I said it, I said it, and my recommendation was that it should be implemented by next year. I think it would be. I didn't think that was that hard. I thought that was something that lawyers could come in and type it up pretty quick.
Mine's not pulling nerves.
I mean, do, I mean, like, is there, is there something like, where you want to do Maggie Days or something?
Well, it was, it was just a little ambiguous, so I was trying to figure out if they're the same, why you were having them updated. And in the timeframe, I didn't understand, because grand jury, when they get impaneled, is not the same as, as a, like, our, the new year, and so I was just trying to be more specific on this thing. I was just trying to understand what you were saying.
No, I know, when I read them, I was actually like, I was trying to actually figure out the differences, but I could see that there was, there was verbiage, and it was, and where I'm not an expert in not understanding that portion of it, because that's lawyer time, you know, money, because that's above my ability for sure, or whatever, so I just figured that the recommendation is that, that the verbiage should be updated to match it. I did feel that, you know, we have to follow the penal code, that's the way the game works, and so I just updated the verbiage, but I felt that the underlying intent was there, so it was exactly the same thing. So for specifics like timeline like that, I mean, said it should be implemented by next year, so that would be.
So by the, and again, I'm just trying to understand.
You're trying to match it to the grand jury timeline.
Yes. And that would be, what I would recommend is that by the time the new grand jury gets impaneled, that perhaps this gets implemented. And the other thing is.
When is that? Like, what, is that January 1st, is that March?
I believe in July, so there should be plenty of time. I think it's in June that we have to turn in our recommendations. I'm not wrong. I could be corrected at any moment, because I don't know for sure. The other thing is, I would really like to see some type of training for an understanding with the department heads and elected officials, especially new elected. I'm sure Keith could run circles around his knowledge compared to mine with grand jury, but I think that would be very informative to have that opportunity, to have just even the statement on the county webpage. When you read that, I mean, it's a lot of information to take in, and what they do and who they are. I just think it'd be great to have an opportunity for department heads and elected officials to have a review of that, so that would be a request I'd like to see. Sorry, can you go in more detail, because it's long.
So are you requesting that to be put into the response?
I would like to see it, but I would like to hear you guys' input on it, too. I mean, I, I would have loved to have somebody other than, you know, when I was assigned to do a report, learning how to do a report, it would have been nice to understand it, you know, the responses and the recommendations and all that. I just think it's very important, and I would have loved to have it.
We had another question. Kay, do you have a question you would like addressed?
Kay Grace from Lewiston. I would like to have this statement to be on the record and included in your minutes for this meeting, and I'll leave a copy. I'll read as much as I can in the three minutes. Before you okay the response to the consolidated financial, financial final report for the grand jury, there are a few things I want, would like you to consider. I find it hard to believe that reviewing three years of grand jury reports, totaling 13 reports, which included 36 responses, and 508 findings or recommendations, was condensed down to seven pages of review, which then manifested two findings and two recommendations. And I actually, I'd like to know if those two recommendations came from the grand jury. I think usually they're the ones that write those, and it seemed that wasn't the case on this one, so I'm just not sure how they did that. Also, there was an error on page six of the grand jury document. Judge Johnson didn't retire, as they stated she was forced to resign by the Commission on Judicial Performance. As for the final review of the Transparency and Election Code, in the follow-up interviews, it was stated grand jury met with a member of the board of supervisors. Which member of the board of supervisors did the grand jury meet with? They said they met with the CAO, we know who that person is, but they should have, they should have stated who they met with on the board of supervisors. The report also claims that all but one of the responses were confirmed implemented. This is not correct. Only thing implemented was to comply with the grand jury report on elections, was to get log-in cabinets for some of the election material and a little better public noticing. The rest of the election codes mentioned in that grand jury report were never followed. The grand jury incorrectly uses the term observers to mean them and only them. The election observers are anyone who wants to observe, with a bit more emphasis given to the grand jury, political parties, candidate representative groups, and so forth. This report states the grand jury sought to observe the process of counting vote-by-mail ballots. The grand jury members were only occasionally there for that. They only, only occasionally showed up for that process, and they were only allowed to observe the vote-by-mail envelope signature verification for about two days out of the weeks that the vote-by-mail envelopes were processed. The grand jury should have objected to Supervisor John Finley writing the first, the initial response, since he's the subject of ongoing election contests. The other thing that was responded to in this, from response seven from the original grand jury response from the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors is aware, this sounds weird, but I just literally copied it from the report. The board of supervisors is aware that an enhances observation window has been put in place, which should allow the appropriate viewing and privacy issues to continue to be adhered to. If that were the case, why did the grand jury members need to go into the room when appropriate viewing, in your opinion, could be done from the hallway? And lastly, while campaigning for the June 2018 elections, Chairman Grove and appointed work assessor reporter Shannon White made repeated statements verbally and in print. court assessor reporter Shannon White made repeated statements verbally and in print, maligning the previous grand jury and publicly claiming the grand jury members had apologized to them. For this interference with the grand jury's process and findings should be cause for Chairman Rose to recuse himself from voting on this matter. Thank you.
Terry, I'm not sure if there's a question in that, but here's the slide.
Okay. Everett Harvey Weaverman. First, I apologize for not spending some time putting all my thoughts together before coming here, but I figured I should say something anyway. This grand jury report is a single report, and that's the entire report from this grand jury, which is a very small one, very few members on it. This report basically says the grand jury's been ignored. Previous reports have been essentially neither dealt with, sometimes never even responded to, and it shows that the discussion you guys had about this single report started off with a very minute details, but then moved into the part about the grand jury as a whole. And basically, the grand jury is an aid to the government, in that it helps them understand what's going on, helps them give a viewpoint of what could be done better, what's being done very well. And basically, what this report shows is, at least for the past three years, the grand jury's basically been ignored. And this shows that really the problem is there needs to be an attitude adjustment. That's what this report's about. It's not about detail, it's just about trying to make things better. That's what I have to say.
Okay. Any more comment, Supervisor Mines? We'll bring it back to the board.
Terry, I can briefly make a recommendation. Typically, this is a small recommendation on this one, typically these are done from the entire board, so I recommend removing the word "I" in front, or the "me" in, so that it reflects the entire board, should the board choose to adopt it.
So, would we make that adjustment and then bring it back, or you're suggesting that we just make that as part of the recommendation?
Part of motion, yes.
Okay, so, does the board have any comments on Supervisor Chadwick's thoughts?
I think hers was the recommendation would be forward, not very forward, if I'm not mistaken, or am I... Well, I don't think we can move forward, because it says, and it came up now, so I can read it. The response to the recommendation has not been implemented, but will be implemented next. Finding number two, not all department heads and elected officials understand the role of the grand jury and how it fulfills its duties. The response was disagrees wholly, and I'm saying, I think, I'm echoing Everett Harvey's... I agree with the grand jury, and I think that our response is that the department heads, as well as elected officials, need to have a greater understanding and embrace the grand jury reports in order to make the corrections that are recommended, and not see them as an adversary, but actually see them for what they are. They're to help government, they're not against us, they're for us. And I think that that was only finding number two. On finding number one, the policy for responding to grand jury reports does not match the penal code. He disagrees wholly, but then he says, now that he wants them to be lined up in the recommendation. If they're both saying the same thing, then some of the verbiage should be updated, it's counterproductive. You can't say you disagree wholly, but you needed, the verbiage should be updated. You either agree or you disagree with the policy, and the policy for responding to the grand jury reports does not match the penal code. And I agree that it does not. When you read the penal code, there are very specific things that we are not doing. And so, now that I have it in front of me, Terry, and I'm sorry that the computers weren't working earlier, that's, and, you know, I wrote down a few of the things right here that the penal code has that we don't have. So, there are several things specific. That's all, sir.
So, you're not against his recommendation, you're against that he disagrees wholly?
I...
His recommendation says he feels they're saying the same thing, but some verbiage could be updated.
Yes.
Recommendation, it's not been, but will be implemented next year, so what I'm guessing is you're fine with that, you're just not fine that he disagrees wholly with it.
The response is not lining up with a recommendation. If you disagree wholly, there would not be a recommendation to update the verbiage.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't, I don't understand how you're coming to that thought, because I said the intent was the same in both. So, I disagree that they're not the same, I agree they are the same, because their intent is the same. Said there's some verbiage that needs to be updated to bring it in line. So, I'm not exactly sure what you think the intent is that I said, but that's absolutely what I've said here. So, they absolutely align themselves.
That's not what I'm reading, so, it says, "I feel that they are both saying the same thing, but there could be some verbiage that should be updated," but that's on your recommendation, and, but your response was that you disagree wholly that the grand jury report does not match the penal code, so...
What, intent?
The word intent, I'm not seeing here.
Well, I think that's obvious, that's what I'm saying, in the sense that I said that they are doing exactly the same thing, but there needed to be some updated verbiage, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to be the one that's going to recommend the updated verbiage. That's why I said it needs to, you know, it needs to be updated. I agree it needs to be updated, but I absolutely think they say the same thing.
Please break the tension.
Sorry about that. Thought I had this thing all the way off.
Can we word it slightly different, with the intent?
Just say it.
Well, I'm not sure that we want to get into wordsmithing up in here, so the question would be, would we ask, in my view, anyway, would we ask it, do we send it back to be relooked at?
What does it do?
I think it'd do now, and that's...
So, would we...
I just sneezed. Am I right, Brittany? Oh, sorry, did you... The date, we'll get your date in one second. It's really tough.
I mean, I understand what Supervisor Mines is saying, that, again, and it makes sense to me, but I also say that it's not extremely clear that that's what's...
Ninety days for the officials of the report. Ninety days for the officials of the report, which is...
June eighteen.
Now I gotta do math.
June eighteen, okay. So, today? Yeah, it's June twenty. There is an option that we can request from the Superior Court Judge for a break extension for two weeks in order to resolve any issues that we currently are having. I prefer to have more time to do that, because if that request is denied or without a report, but that is an option we can utilize as well, and they have been very gracious in the past, knowing that we have meetings every two weeks.
It also depends on how long it takes to make that request to the court.
We can make the request right now and table this to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And that's at what pleasure.
I'm sorry, say again?
We can request the court a two-week extension during, right now, and table this matter at the end of the meeting, to have a determination whether they'll grant us two weeks.
Well, let's go on to the second point first, which was that Supervisor Chadwick wasn't, the second finding, that not all department heads and elected officials understand the role of grand jury and how it fulfills its duties. Did you want to comment further on that?
No, I'll just restate it, you know, that I think it would be a benefit for the elected officials and the department heads to have instructions on, or, I don't want to say instructions, because department heads don't really have to do anything, but just to have an overview of knowledge in order to understand what the grand jury is, because we're putting them in a position that they feel like they're our adversary and not our ally.
John?
It's, I feel that, I know that it's up to each supervisor to basically train themselves. We have a stipend for education. We're going out and getting trained, and we need to use that to train ourselves. You take this job, you need to know how to do it. So, I agree that supervisors on this board do need to be trained, do need to know what a grand jury is, do need to go through the process, and it is my responsibility to train myself and to figure it out. And I feel that for every supervisor here.
My thought on this is that, see, I would throw in the grand jury needs to learn the role of the grand jury is also an education. So, I have no problems with having some sort of sponsored meeting that's brought up to department heads and supervisors and grand jury members on the outside, who have a role of the grand jury and the meetings and that sort of thing, so I would have no problem with that call. But the question here is, do we need to write that into this, or what John said? Terry obviously went around and interviewed some department heads, and he felt that they had a clear understanding of what the grand jury's role is.
It's kind of how you answer a question, you know, saying that they don't know, so I went and asked them personally, "Do you know?" They responded, "Yes," and explained it, so, at that point, I felt that they had that under control, so why would I assume something when I have the direct, correct answer? No assumption.
But you do recommend that newly appointed elected officials should meet with the...
I thought that that could not hurt, how could that hurt? You know, I thought that was a positive. Sometimes things are still working, but you can improve, and I felt that could improve things.
So, Ms. Chadwick, is that, is that response that we would recommend that they have meetings with newly appointed officials, does that meet your desire, even though he says disagrees wholly?
Again, I think it's to the benefit of all elected officials, whether they're new or not. There's many classes that we, as John was saying earlier, that we have to take, and they're reviewed, whether it's a two-year or a three-year, they're annually reviewed or semi-annually, or however you want to say it. I don't think it does any harm for people to review, and especially in light of the fact that the grand jury now feels it is not being, and I think it's a great idea what you have, the grand jury having been, I know they can't be, can't know who they are, so, you know, but I think it's a great idea, the more training, I think, the stronger will be, not less.
So, with that, I would request contact the court, and we'll move this to the end of the meeting, or to either our response from them, or we have to act there.
Also, perhaps this board might want to look and put together ordinance to require, to request that board members attain a certain level of training once they are elected. There's no way to enforce it, of course, but you can still, and maybe Ms. Chadwick interested in moving forward with that. So, that's just a...
We'll let that lie right there.
An opinion, lie right there, okay? Stop stamping, stop standing on it.
We will continue this until later in the meeting. All right. On to two point one five. Find no objection with the issuance of daily alcohol license to the Rocky Mountain Health Foundation to serve alcohol companies to serve women for wildlife and health of the Better Call, Whereville, California, November third. I will recuse myself of this, since it is an alcohol...
All right, yeah, it's read. Any comments from the board, questions, members of the public? See, now I'll bring it back to the board.
Second?
On the paper?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so passed. Thank you, John. You can let him in now.
Boy, that's how you run a music house, Supervisor?
Get in there. So, you read the item for me?
All right. Not ten o'clock yet. So, we'll move on to reports from department heads. Not everybody it wants.
I just wanted to give you an update on the C E Ps that are being processed. We still have the same eight applications, with one that been approved, but one, we did have all the information, and we got all the information, it is now in circulation, and scheduled for maybe next month.
Do you anticipate the others quickly kind of following?
It's all dependent upon when I receive information. I know I'm supposed to receive some information either this week or next week, one of them, and we should be able to immediately process that one, and we'll monitor the thirty-day review and action shortly thereafter.
Thank you, Rick.
On DOT stuff, you might recall a while back, you proved a thing to analyze all the roads in the tree else. Fudge is going to be here next week, and they will be looking at all the roads, and we'll be getting that studied well underway.
Rick, the roads closed to the fire, what's the schedule for those?
All of the roads are open, except for the east side road from East Fork Road up to the top of the mountain, although my understanding is pretty much being used already. But it may be closed because of the forest closure, that was in place, and some of the damage that was... Once I hear that there's no longer anything going on with forest closure rule... Once I hear that, that there's no longer anything going on with forest closure rule, we pack up. We just left the signs out there. There's no hard closure or anything. It's just we were requested to leave them, so we left them.
What about East Fork Road?
East Fork Road is supposed to be reopened. Is the sign out there?
Yes, it says area is closed.
Okay, well, since we're not getting it.
All right, any other department heads?
I just sort of re-reported, I, last week I brought a list of where we were with code enforcement. My intent would be to update that monthly. I didn't want to let the board know that in the interim since last meeting, we have had some re-inspections done, we're able to report on a couple of properties. I won't give more details on that because we're proceeding forward, but I'd just love to know, the board know that I will continue to bring those updates, probably monthly, but give you the interim as well.
So how many?
Three.
We have, we've had three?
Yes, that is correct.
Three.
Re-inspections. Three re-inspections.
All right, thank you. Any other department heads? Okay. CAO?
I've got to report this time.
Okay. Supervisor Reminds?
Nothing to report.
Supervisor Kelly?
Only out of county travel was to PSA 2 AAA yesterday to Burning. That's it.
Supervisor Chadwick?
There was a, an EMS unusual meeting that we had, and there's some things happening, but it's all in the most, I can't really report on them. And then the all chiefs meeting on Monday was interesting because it was a skeleton group because they were totally, anybody there because of fires. And then during the meeting, there was a fire kitty cat from back to the Red Barn on River Ranch Road, but they did an amazing job. It's almost like they kept it exactly within the boundaries, so the meeting was stalled halfway through because of the fire call.
Which I believe was a goose running into the power line.
Actually, it was, and it hit both, both wings, hit different, and the next day there was another one in the field that, so happened to us, lightning hits twice in a row.
Okay, I'll stop there. Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, Supervisor Morris?
Mine, I tell.
Okay, I had a TMC meeting in beautiful town of Wichita, nothing extraordinary to talk about there. I did have to leave early due to the fires. All right. On to ad hoc committees. What's happening with the state legislation?
I have nothing to report on.
Okay.
Nothing since last meeting? Are you in there yet? Never mind.
All right.
Wasn't there a SB that passed that gives 12 extra months to the sequel for the temporary? I don't know if that got signed or not. So I don't know.
And I have to admit, there was another one that I was watching that came up that has slipped my mind.
But there has been work on to keep the temporary licenses going for-
There is work on that, I just don't know if it was signed yet, but maybe it was.
Right, that's what it was.
I mentioned it last week.
I haven't linked if I, I'll bug you again if I find it.
The cannabis ordinance?
Well, we have the second reading today of the two quick amendments. Then, as we've been mentioning, that we are taking a lot of feedback over the public comments in reviewing for additional amendments on cultivation, which will have to go to planning commission first and come back here, so that's, that's in the works.
And so, just remind me, the public can attend the planning commission meetings?
Yes, just so, that is, for those who aren't familiar, that is part of the public hearing process. Please attend the planning commission meetings and then eventually they end up in front of the board.
Okay, and then they also just looked at manufacturing, I believe that, that was coming back up?
Right. They did that last Thursday, the manufacturing amendments that we sent back down, and they heard it last Thursday.
That the board has a whole request to send back in? Publicly?
Yep, thank you.
All right, new jail? Have you started construction yet?
I have a shovel. So no, nothing new. I think Director Chip it's in here. If there's anything new that we're still on track to, the fire set us back a little bit, but we're still on track and moving forward.
Does that mean, did packages go out soon?
That would be my change, and Rick, come through it.
While Rick's walking up, it was 80, 20, 20. I think we're talking about global jurisdiction licenses.
So we got the rudimentary, or I would say, it's a packet of this lease program that you guys authorized us to execute and to, we're finalized the, some adjustments to the wording with that, and once that's signed, then we should be shortly in or have to get any approval to go out to bid. I see us being out to bid probably sometime next month. Either I'll be, it'll be the first or second meeting in October that I'll have you approve the bids and all valid sheets of it. Yeah, so you can start.
Good, get back to us at a time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Rick. COP, we have on later?
Yes, we'll dress out of 5.5.
Okay.
And same thing with the budget, we'll dress out of 5.2.
Okay, and wilderness oversight, we have not set a time yet to go out and get more information from the public. I have sent Congressman Huffman a note telling him what our process is going to be and have not heard a reply. All right, with that, yeah, let's, we're a couple of minutes away from 10 o'clock, so let's take a five-minute break. All right, Mike, you're back on. Back into open meeting. We are at the 10 o'clock public hearing. Planning and zoning conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning planning file P 1808 regarding APN 00430002 in the North Lake area. Number one, adopt a mitigated native declaration, finding on the basis of the whole record before the board, including the initial study, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment, and that a mitigated native declaration reflects the board's independent judgment and analysis and planning commission recommendation of approval. Introduce, number two, introduce and waive the reading of an act and ordinance amending the Trinity County zoning ordinance 315 by rezoning approximately 296 acres on APN 00430002 from unclassified to timberland production TPZ zone located in the west of Coffee Creek. Staff?
Good morning. So this is a parcel, it's nearly half a section, it's 296 acres, and it's southwest of Coffee Creek, it's real close to the Boulder, Boulder Lake Trailhead. The applicant, or the applicant agent appeared at the planning commission meeting when they listened to this item and presented the management plan for the parcel, and there's a long-term management plan, timber management plan for this, and the commission did approve it unanimously. There were no questions from the commission. It seemed to make sense because that area in general has quite a bit of industrial timber, and it seemed like a good thing as well to go from unclassified into a viable zoning district, and this one truly was the most appropriate zoning district.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, at this point we'll open up to the public for any comment. Okay. Back to the board. Comments?
No, sir. Motion to approve 5.1 is presented, and that's just a negative death portion of it.
Right, so-
5.1A for that?
3.1-
I'm sorry, 3.1, sorry, 3.11.
Okay, we have a second on the first part? Okay, thank you. Yes, all, well, let's go ahead and do it.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Bedlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, retain a motion on part two.
So made regarding introducing the reading of an act, the ordinance as requested.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Bedlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Martin?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye. All right. Good job, by the way.
Yes.
Staff reports. All right, county matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be heard out of order. Changes in the order? Nope. Public? Nope. All right. 5.1, waive the reading and enact an ordinance amending the Trinity County Code, Section 43 pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation regulations introduced September 5th, 2018.
Thank you, Chair, I'll handle this matter. Oh, listen, if you want to, it's just the second-
Hang on a second.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. This is the second reading for the ordinance that has some minor changes to the commercial cannabis cultivation regulations. No changes were made between the first and the second reading, and therefore staff would recommend it adopted.
Any questions from the board? All right, any questions from the audience? All right, with that, we bring it back.
So.
Okay.
Second.
Supervisor Bedlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Aye. Could somebody please ask Terry to come back in because he's not here, because he's talking about some things. He's probably downtown.
Supper coffee.
Yeah, I've got an hour to come back.
Sure.
I have a question.
Okay.
So I assume the application is, you've been working on it as requested last meeting and ready to go for this, or close ready to go?
It should be ready to go.
And hopefully staff will have that upside shortly.
It's been, it's been created, agreed by staff, so it's, you can follow it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're on to 5.2. Adopt a resolution that adopts the final budget for fiscal years 2017, 18. One million fiscal impact is, 118 million, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Chairman Grove, would you like to first change the staff report? It's not the 1718, it's 1819. However, in the resolution, it's correct that it's 1819 in the resolution. We're asking the board, in accordance with the public hearing held September 11, 2018, before you, consider a resolution to adopt final budget for fiscal year 1819. Final budget totals, one million, sorry, 118 million, eighty-three thousand, five, eight hundred and fifty, includes a general fund contingency of 316,473. We're also asking that the budget resolution further provides that the auditor and CEO of our board designate may be authorized to execute any budget adjustments to reallocate budgets, impose reductions, increases to specified budget lines without further board supervisor's approval.
Any questions? All right, any questions from the public? Okay, we bring it back.
Second, and to adopt the resolution, which adopts the final budget for fiscal years 1718 as presented and as stated by CAO, remind you? Nope, great, thank you.
Do we have to amend the years?
No, that's just, that's in the, that's in the work of the resolution, it's correct.
Okay.
Supervisor Bedlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Martin?
Aye.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye. All right. Human resource, 5.3, hear and render a decision regarding the grievance of employee Scott McAllister pursuant to Trinity County Code, Section 20.60.720C6. And I just want to clarify one, that rendering the decision would be in a closed session?
Correct. At Chair's pleasure, I can walk through the process briefly, since we haven't done this in a while. So what we have today is a grievance under county code 260720C6. What the process is, is that I'll give a brief introduction, just so the board is aware of the procedure, and an employee has the right to state their position about why they believe the grievance should be granted. Department head will then respond to that, and an employee, because they have the government approval, have a chance to rebut it. During this process, the board does have permission to ask any questions they want of the grievance or the grievance counsel. This is, since this is a public, a employee at grievance, it's a personnel matter, there's no public comment on this, and then the board will deliberate privately and issue a written decision related to what they believe would be the appropriate course of action. I've had a chance to review the documents provided and wanted to provide the board with just a brief summary of how we got to this point. There was a grievance filed in August 2016 by an equipment shop supervisor believing that he was entitled to a take-home vehicle. The department had responded that they did not believe that was allowed under current policy, and in this matter worked up a change to what's called the state mediation process. So either an individual was brought in, a mutual was brought in from the State Department to mediate this matter. As a result of that mediation, on October 4th, 2016, the road commissioner requested permission to be able to resolve the grievance, which was granted, and ultimately, the equipment shop supervisor was allowed to take home a vehicle or to use a vehicle between the Haybord and Beaverville yard for commuting purposes. In December 19th, 2016, or, I'm sorry, around that time, the auditor did issue a new fringe benefit policy that was provided to the board of supervisors, and as part of that, the auditor did state, based on the findings of the grand jury, that she would be doing an audit of departments to make sure that they're in compliance with the take-home vehicle policy. I do not believe she was aware of this grievance was occurring, but she did issue an opinion that this was an inappropriate use of a take-home vehicle. At the end of December of 2017, a memo, which is included in your packet, was provided to the employees stating that they're obliged to discontinue the commuting, but that they were allowed to reinstate their grievance because they did not believe the right to also continue to grieve it. Because it had already gone through state mediation of the channel, this is the next step, and this is their opportunity to state their position as to why they believe, why the equipment shop supervisor believes he's entitled to a vehicle. And again, there'll be no discussion about this publicly because this is an employee personnel matter, it'll be done in private.
Thank you.
So how long are we allowed to look at this, or how quickly do we have to send this, a written response?
Well, our code doesn't say that specifically. I would recommend that it be done within Thursday.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. In our policy- In our policy, there is a panel that you're able to, an employee is able to be in front. It seems like that didn't happen, or am I wrong?
That, that's, we did use that. So the state mediation panel is, what the code says is that we have an individual from the county, individual from the union, and then we have a mutual. Parties agreed to waive the two from either side. We did bring in neutral. And so that, that part of the grievance procedure was complied with, just stipulation that we were going to use the mutual though.
Okay. But that wasn't, it didn't show in the backup?
Yeah, the backup was on.
I apologize for that, but I think parties must stipulate that we did utilize it.
So would that have been step three?
So.
Five?
I have to look at the code, but it, yes, it would be the four.
I didn't know whether third level management representative was filled out in the backup, so.
It's level five. So that would be the grievance panel. And the grievance panel requires us to bring in a mutual person. That was. It's the Chair's pleasure. We could turn it over to the grievance to present their case.
Okay, no other technical questions here?
Actually, what happened to level three management representative that wasn't filled out?
I believe it was.
Okay.
But we can, I can double check that. It's my understanding that level three said it was, that they were unable to make a decision and referred it up to department head. But let me pull up.
Level four is filled out?
Level four is department head. So I believe that's not in the staff report.
Level three or five is see following?
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
I think level four reflects level three.
Level three, okay, got it. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, any further technical questions?
Thanks.
Go ahead and turn it over. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, and my name's Rafael Ruano. I'll give my card to the clerk if you'd like. I represent the grievance here, Scott McAllister. And I appreciate taking the time to hear us today. We'll promise to be brief and to the point. We don't think that this is a complex grievance and should, should not take a whole lot of time for us to present, you know, the main issues here. The issues are essentially what Ms. Long covered as far as the history of the case. What is critical to point out is that this matter did go to a mediator, to that panel, through that process. The parties, the grievance, and the department head, and ultimately this board approved a settlement by which Mr. McAllister was allowed to take a vehicle home for his use. Again, per the department head and board approval, that was the mediated settlement of this grievance. That took effect at the beginning of 2017 and all through that year. That was, that was what took place. The IRS regulations that the auditor reviewed and used to come up with a new or revised policy that she presented to the county, we have no, no problems with. The problem is that she herself admitted that she was unaware of the board's mediated settlement with Mr. McAllister when she made the specific recommendation that he not be allowed to take home the vehicle. All right, that is a fact. We have an email that shows that. And we presented that evidence to the county, but yet we were rebuffed and told that the vehicle was going to be taken away and that we had to move forward with the grievance. All right, the problem is that we went through the grievance. We settled the grievance. All right, the board approved the settlement. All right, and the auditor, in her email to us where she said that she was unaware of that mediated settlement agreement, essentially says, you know, "I can't supersede what the board does. I can't offer a recommendation beyond what the board does. The board can clearly allow, as they already do through the county, allow a lot of county employees to take home vehicles." All right, the issue here was not whether or not that's allowed. The issue is whether or not that is a fringe benefit per the IRS codes, the IRS regs. And we've, Mr. McAllister has readily agreed that if indeed the type of vehicle that he's taking home is to be considered per IRS regs, fringe benefits, that he's willing to pay whatever taxes or fees are associated with that fringe benefit. So there's no holdup in continuing the settlement agreement that was agreed to between Mr. McAllister and the county back in 2016. The only reason we're here is that the county has refused to allow that settlement to continue under the guise that, well, the auditor is saying that you can't take home the vehicle. Well, the auditor herself admitted that she didn't know that Mr. McAllister had a settlement that allowed for him to take home a vehicle, a settlement that was approved by the board. She does not have authority to supersede the board. Therefore, that recommendation was made in error. And what should happen is Mr. McAllister should be able to go back to the terms of the mediated settlement and continue to take home the vehicle, just as we agreed to back in October of 2016. That's it. It's not more complicated than that. I saw some parts there. I hope I didn't lose some of you as far as, you know, trying to get through this. It's a little bit windy. But those are the facts. I don't think I stated anything that's outside the scope of any sort of argument as to what the facts are. Scott, did you want to add anything? No, I think we're good.
I think we covered it.
We are certainly open to any questions, myself, but Mr. McAllister is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions?
No, sir.
Sir?
Okay, we do reserve an opportunity to rebut, as Ms. Long said, but thank you very much.
As, as the events were explained, correct, it came down to, I was having discussions with the auditor about the use of vehicles and the new IRS regs. And one of the things that the auditor had done was push the department back to the policies that are as written in the county code. And that we had to go get each individual driver or each individual user who uses vehicle to fill out the form that goes to the CAO to be approved and then and the auditor to be approved. And then I can allow someone to use the vehicle. The auditor said that it was not a correct use. It's not allowed in the county code. The way it was, the way the code is written essentially says that the foreman can drive the vehicle home. But she was saying in that particular case that that wasn't authorized the way it was written. And therefore, she directed me to cease and desist in what we were doing. So I prepared a letter for the county council. At the time, we, I, we didn't have a CAO, and so I issued the letter, and that's kind of where we stand right now.
You're thinking like you want to.
Well, no, I'm not sure. I should ask it here later.
It would have been.
Okay, go ahead.
I noticed that the policy that's being referred to is not included in the backup, by the way. So.
The one that the auditor is relying on to make her case?
Is that the IRS side or the ordinance that?
I believe it's.
Our ordinance?
The Trinity County ordinance.
Yeah, not the grievance part, unless I, I can't open this, so. But I don't believe it's in here. Thank you. I mean, I.
Yeah.
So just FYI, we are to go into discussion. That'd be helpful for reference.
They can receive a copy of that, of the code.
Okay.
Oh, and it looks like they have on file.
So I just want to make sure that we're talking about this memorandum that says taxable fringe benefits?
I believe we're talking about Trinity County take-home vehicle policy.
Right.
That would be under the new ordinance, new code?
Yes.
Correct. No, it's good for us to make sure we're all in agreement on what we're looking at before we go, before you deliberate on it.
So Rick, is what, are you saying today that when you went to the grievance meeting, what do you call it, where you worked out and said that, yes, he could take the car, that you were unaware of, that if, you knew today that you would not have allowed that to happen?
Well, when we approved initially, the way the vehicles were being handled were, I would say, not completely consistent with county code. There was, there was a lot more flexibility offered at that time, the foreman and some of the direct combined road crew supervisors. And so, you know, working on that flexibility that had been long established, I was very open to permitting it. But when they had grand jury issue, the IRS rates had come down and it was much more restrictive. And the county auditor saying, "This is what I'm instructing you to do, is cease and desist on this," then I changed my approach on that and said, "This is, this is what we're going to do."
To me, the county code is pretty clear. Hopefully, it's ordinance 2.60.80, authorization to take county vehicles home. Is that what you were following? And is the?
What I was following before the auditor.
Before the auditor.
We were following practices that were long established.
Are they established with 2.60.800?
They are now consistent with that as of about a year and a half ago when we were required to justify all take-home use.
Which is, A, employees who are assigned a county vehicle to take home on a regular basis shall do so only after prior authorization by the Board of Supervisors. That's fairly clear.
Part B as well.
What?
There's a part B as well.
Right. Do you want to hear that one?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, B, due to work scheduling, comma, on-call duty, comma, emergencies or other work-related considerations, the department head at his or her discretion may assign an employee a county vehicle to take home. However, such assignment shall not exceed 12 times in any 12-month period without prior authorization of the Board of Supervisors. And that's it. It was put together in 1988.
So counsel, am I, we can allow, my understanding is we can allow anybody we choose to take a car home if it comes in progress?
That's what the code says. Of course, there are IRS provisions, not what it's qualified for. And we do have a, an internal policy related to driving, and of course, in the scope of employment, that could also come into play. But yes, it's also a, the board's decision about who takes home a take-home vehicle on the county.
And so was the testimony we received correct that, that the IRS issue is only an issue of if you paid taxes on it?
Correct. It's, well, it's how you, how you pay for fringe benefits. Yes.
So they're not saying you can't do it. It's just, it's compensation?
Correct. There are your liability issues as well running, vintage, driving county vehicles that may have IRS components to it, but I do not disagree to state in some way.
Okay, so Rick, my question to you is, you obviously felt that this was, you allowed it in the first place, thinking that this was something that was, you wanted to have happen. And so if.
We negotiated.
Yeah, right. At that time, you were, felt it was a benefit to the county to do this. So.
Well, it was consistent with current practice at that time.
Okay. So if the code stops us from, from you having the decision-making, why didn't you just bring it to the board and say, "You know what? I want this to happen. Can the board, you know, okay this?"
Well, it was, it was a lot of longstanding practices were discontinued when we had to go to the IRS with the IRS rates. It was, it was kind of a two-part thing. It was one, you fill out a form that you had to route to get approval of using county vehicles. That was something that we had not practiced prior. It used to be just, you got assigned a vehicle. And we took it. We had that, and then we had the IRS things. And it was, it was the fact that we, that they had started scrutinizing all the uses of vehicles and a lot of the vehicle use had been discontinued at that point, that when the auditor says this is not consistent with what we were doing, I understood that. And that was why I said, "Well, okay, we terminate that." When I made the agreement, we were doing one thing, that one thing that based that agreement initially was terminated. So when we had the second time around looking at it, that was based on the new way we're doing things.
Which agreement was terminated? Which agreement did you terminate? One that you had come to a conclusion with or made, had an agreement with, or one that the Board of Supervisors made?
The one that we had the agreement with.
And, but the Board of Supervisors did, you did bring it before the, the board, and the board did make a decision, correct? Am I missing something here?
So on October 4th, 2016, the matter was brought to closed session, the resolution of grievance.
And the board approved the resolution of agreement?
The board approved granting authorization to the, to the Director of Transportation, Angela, Angela Selma.
Okay, so which did you decide to, or the auditor decide to terminate? None of them, or did you decide to terminate any of them?
My direction to me was to cease and desist what I was doing. So I terminated the agreement. That was what it was.
But you've overruled the board. If this came to the board.
Well, this coming to the board now for you to make a decision. If there's different information.
But if it came to the board to grieve and for him to make an agreement, we gave permission to him to, to do that, which he did. So that was authorized by the board, and then it wasn't authorized to the board to not, to undo the agreement.
But they proceed with those from the auditor, that they, that all's been seen.
But we have the ability to overrule the auditor.
I, I, that's why we're here.
I don't know if I want to get into that now, or the IRS.
So, okay, Chair?
I think that, that what this one gentleman had said earlier is an exact layout of it, that what happened is, is the lady that made the suggestion for you to cease and desist wasn't given all the information. And the fact that she didn't have the information that there was a mediated settlement already, she made a recommendation that couldn't possibly be accurate.
So I recommend that we ask questions in this final summary of discussion, right?
Right, so I think that the question is, is who overruled the already mediated settlement?
Well, I.
I don't know. That's, that's what I'm, maybe, I don't know. That's kind of what I was going to ask was, is how did this get there?
When I was in the discussion with the auditor, I did mention that this was.
Also, okay. I'm just saying, it just seems like that it was kind of finished already, and then now it came back a different way. But it's okay. Don't worry.
Okay. Would you like a brief rebuttal?
So just a couple of things. I do want to point out that since this policy or this auditor's review has taken place, as far as we're aware, Mr. McAllister is the only one, the only employee of the road department that has had his take-home vehicle taken away. If that's inaccurate, I appreciate that. But we believe that there's at least nine road department employees that are taking home vehicles at this point. Again, I want to point out that the, as you guys pointed out, that the county policy 2.60.800 clearly states that authorization of the Board of Supervisors is required for a take-home vehicle, and that trumps any sort of staff recommendation. And then lastly, with respect to auditor controller Angela Vickel, we have an email here, and I have copies. I'm more than happy to hand it to you. But I referenced it earlier, but I just want to clarify what she said in this email. And this is an email to Mr. Copeland, who is the UPEC labor representative. It copied county council and Mr. Tippett and several other. It copied County Council and Mr. Tippett and several other people in the county with respect to a conference that she had had with the discussion that was the use of the county vehicles. She says, "At no time during this conference call was I made aware that Scott," meaning Mr. McCallister, "filed a grievance with the county, which ended up going to the board and was approved by the Board of Supervisors. Otherwise, my answer would have been totally different, as I can't supersede the board's decision." That was Ms. Vickel's words. And I have seven copies of this. You're more than welcome to it.
I feel that Ms. wants to.
I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. Any questions?
I do not. Thank you. So, given that email, would you take it as she was rescinding her notice, given the new information she had received about the previous agreed settlement?
Well, that was certainly the argument that we tried to make to the county, because we felt that she did not have complete information. We didn't, you know, attribute any, you know, any motive to that. But when we pointed that out, we were told that, you know, the policy or the decision had been made. The county vehicle was taken away effective January this year, and we were forced to at that point, because the grievance was reinstated, to take it, to take it up to this step. I'd be here for today.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
That, I think we're done with this part.
I recommend deliberating at the end of that board meeting. So, it's not, unless it's chair.
I'll go to closed session then or later.
But we can also agendaize for next week if you want some time to process the information. I would like to.
My question is.
Sorry.
This is, it's not agendaized on the closed. Does this automatically make it part of the closed?
The proper procedure would be to now recess and deliberate, since you're sitting on a quasi judiciary capacity on this. However, if it's the board's pleasure, we can move that deliberation to the end and include it as part of closed session. Or if the board would like to recess this hearing and hear again in closed session at the next board meeting, we can agendaize that. It's board's pleasure.
I will just wield my mighty power and say we will add this onto the closed session. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Onto 5.4, approved county debt management policy.
Good morning. Terry McQuarrie, Treasury Tax Collector. So, debt management policy you have before you, it's something that, that there's a couple of different organizations. CDAC, which is California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, and Government Finance Officers Association. Those are two organizations that typically set a lot of standards for the way government agencies, you have set policies and the standards for the way you do business. But this is something that we're aware of. There's a new law that was passed that recommended that agencies adopt a debt policy. And I was already in the process of doing, I was preparing a debt policy. And then with the refinancing, we needed to move that forward. So, there's a couple of issues that I'd like to add to the, to come back at a later date to add to the policy for more details. But this is something that, the purpose of this is basically to set some standards to protect the agency and the taxpayers, and to set some standards for in the future if we were to do any other debt issue, and to kind of give some guidelines so that it helps those involved and set some standards as far as what we should be doing or shouldn't do as far as the policy is concerned. Do you all have any questions for me in regards to the policy?
I do.
Mm-hmm.
So, are you making changes? I got two different pieces of information prior, I guess yesterday. So, are you making changes to existing policy?
This is a brand new, we have not had a policy in place.
Okay. Because I was under the understanding that it's something different. So, what I ask, this is completely new.
This is completely new.
Let me refer to this 5.6, which is the annual investment policy.
Oh, thank you. Okay. There we have it. So, that's.
Any questions?
I just, I really appreciate this. I think it really helps to have a clear manual. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Any questions from the Senate?
No, sir.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, we bring it back.
Make a motion to approve, if you're prepared, 5.
Yeah, go ahead.
5.4, policy for debt management, from the Attorney Tax Collector as presented.
Okay, discussion. So, I take it counsel and the CIO have gone through this thoroughly? And objections?
No objections.
All right. Resolution?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call it.
You do the public?
There, you did the public.
I did your.
Supervisor Chabot?
Aye.
Supervisor Benley?
Yes.
Supervisor Lawrence?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Aye.
All right. 5.5, adopt a resolution which authorize and directs execution of a property lease, site, facility lease, excuse me, and related financial, financing documents, and directs certain related actions in connection with the refinancing of lease obligations, and authorize the chair or supervisor sign documents related to the refunding of CO5 COPs. Subject to writing in form, approximately $80,000 a year annual savings, I guess if it was a year, it would be in that, I mean, beginning with the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year. Cost of issuance is approximately $127,500 to be paid out of debt issuance.
Okay. So, as everyone's aware, at the time when the, those COPs were issued, we were at a point when the county was potentially, you know, facing insolvency if those weren't issued. So, at that time, they, there were restrictions placed on the county that that was one of our goals when coming to, for direction to seek refinancing, was that to redo some of the restrictions and to, and unencumber one of the buildings that was one of the assets. And so, basically, when we, we've reached a point in the market where it's beneficial for us to move forward with refinancing, like we were at eight and a half percent. So, it's a good time now to move forward. So, when I, when I came to you, we did form that committee, and the committees met, and we moved forward, and we submitted an IRP. We did receive several proposals back that were, we were really pleased with what we received back from the, from everyone. And we ended up, would recommend, we were moving forward with Unqua. We have a relationship with them, and they actually came back through low market, which is like phenomenal. We weren't, I expected something well, but I didn't expect something quite that well. The committee, and along with the, we have a member that's on the, two members that are on the Budget Committee, and with the auditor, we looked and we talked about the future impact and things that were about to come up. And so, we discussed what we thought would be the best recommendation for overall for the county. And so, what we, what you have before you is an overall level savings. Since we currently have budgeted in this fiscal year to pay the current annual payment, that's already budgeted this fiscal year. And so, the way that this particular issue is structured is that we would take that particular payment, and we would apply that. So, technically, we'd be borrowing less than what we would overall. And so, essentially, what this will do is we'll be, we'll pay this off a year earlier. We'll have, so we won't have initial savings this, this current fiscal year. We'll see those savings next fiscal year. But the savings would be approximately about $80,000 each fiscal year. And so, and then we'll have, we'll pay this off, it would be a year earlier than what we were initially anticipated. So, that's something that we're pretty pleased about. And that would, like I said, unencumber one of the two buildings that we have and remove the restriction that we have as far as our limits on our debt requirement. So, that's one of the things that we were looking to do. And the debt committee was in agreement with me in that we move forward with that. I do also have here with me, I have Brian Harrelson, who's with Jones Hall, and so he's available also if you have any questions for him in regards to anything specific as far as structuring is concerned. In your packet, we did try to include, sometimes the verbiage and the legalese and some of those documents can be confusing. So, what we did try to do is include something there that kind of explained what each of those, what essentially what those documents were doing. And so, hopefully, that was helpful to you to describe what they were.
Terry, for the record, could you say what buildings we unencumber?
We will be unencumbering the courthouse.
And explain a little deeper for the public, the lifting of the restriction for the.
Some of the restrictions that we had were that, in the event that, we're starting to reach a point where we're becoming more fiscally sound. And so, in the event that we are, if we do have funds available with the debt restrictions, we are not able to keep any of those funds available within the county, we would be required to take those funds to pay that debt off sooner. So, we couldn't take that to pay the sheriff and have more boots on the ground. We would have those, we are required to take that money and pay that debt down. We, one of the things, I really, I personally really wanted to unencumber one of those buildings, remove that restriction. The other thing that we had was, we, there's two types of reserves. So, one was that we, we're a teetering county, so that reserve is, once you reach a certain threshold, it's anything over that. And so, that's what that dollar amount is. We're also able to use the monies that we had, that were held as part of the initial deal when the initial COPs were issued. So, we can take that, that will also be applied to this when it's issued. So, that's, they're savings there as well, because we will not be required to have that with the new issuance.
So, we were required to have a reserve, basically?
We will not be.
But we were.
We were required to have a reserve.
And that's paying that off?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from?
No, I have no questions.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public.
Ever Harvey Weaver Bell again. I have to confess, I haven't read the back-up, and I'm certainly not very knowledgeable on all this stuff. I thank you for saying that this is the courthouse. But before that, I had no idea what you guys were talking about. From what I understand, the lease rate has gone down. And this is based upon some perception of market value. And I'm wondering if there's a better or cheaper place you guys could move to and just give up this lease and save even more. Maybe the owners of the courthouse would also be willing to negotiate if you're really willing to move. You might even get a better deal. Anyway, that's just some thoughts.
Kate Graves from Lewiston. So, is the, there was a million dollars that was supposed to be set aside. Is that entire million dollars going into paying off the CO? Or is a part of it is, you said part of it was going, the money you had to hold in reserve. It has been a million dollars. Is that the money in reserve that you're talking about?
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm not familiar with what million dollars you're referencing, but it's 400 and, what I'm referencing right now that we would find is 400 and 56,000, I believe. That's what we're going to be applying.
Back in 2005, when they first were setting up this, they, part of the stipulations was that they had to set aside, because we're basically junk bonds, we had to set aside a million dollars in case we defaulted. So, we had a million dollars set aside. Is that million dollars, can that go into paying off the debt, is my question?
There's not a million dollars set aside. There's, there's 400 and something thousand dollars, and that debt is something that is going to be applied to pay this down. That's part of what I meant for reserve fund. So, that would be applied to this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
I'll move to the.
A second.
Yeah.
Discussion. Okay, I'd like to, this isn't really a discussion, but Terry, I want to thank you for all of this process. As painful as, the county made it for you, but thank you. It's been well over a year, two years. So, thank you.
And I want to thank you and everybody involved in this to not do this as painlessly as.
And quickly.
And quickly. So, that's a good step forward, a good fiscal change.
Sounds like, sounds like I'm quite thinking of big time.
I was really pleased with that. I really wasn't expecting it to be that. I thought they would come back with something nice, but I wasn't expecting, I mean, they're below market.
I'm, I'm checking today. I'm checking, yeah, so.
Well, and they have their good partners. Please, they can make it up here.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, with that, I'll roll. Supervisor Benley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chabot?
Aye.
Supervisor Lawrence?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? Aye. Okay, on to 5.6, for county annual investment policy.
Okay. So, on this one, what you have before you is, over this last election period and just over my course in office, it's become apparent, there's a lot of, a lot of people that are lay folks that don't typically, aren't in that world, that's not their wheelhouse. And so, they don't have the knowledge or the experience. And so, we typically use more of a, we had like a basic of basic, we met what was required for government code, but yet it was barely just vague and just met those basic requirements. So, what I've done is I've included a lot more in-depth details. And so, so questions that I received, like from the public or just in general, I've tried to make it a lot more in-depth. And so, that's what the whole entire policy's been revamped. Not as far as, well, I should say not revamped, it's formatting is what you have. So, just to include more depth. So, it's not, things weren't changed in regards to what we're investing or all of that. It's just to include more details of it. It makes it more user-friendly so you're aware of what we're doing and how we're doing it and why.
And this complies with all state laws?
It absolutely does.
Any questions?
Is, I understand the purpose of this document and why you're bringing it forward and the whole thing, but does it really need more approval or?
It does. Code says that I do.
Okay, code said, you got it. You got me hooked right there. That's fine. No further.
Okay. Well, that will open up to the public. Okay, we're back here. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
What question?
Okay, discussion.
Although this doesn't spell out where you're going to invest money, but it does raise a question in my, for me, in terms of where our deposits are going. Are we working that closely with Unqua that we're really quite that banking partner with them? They've been with us through our short-term loan efforts and this refi. Are we doing a lot of business with Unqua?
They're a primary bank, and so that's where our deposits, our daily, our daily transactions are through Unqua. And that's, the pricing that they gave us for the refinancing is because of our relationship with them. So, we have several accounts there with Unqua. And so, we can purchase CDs and things like that, different types of investments with them over the years. And so, we do quite a bit of business with them.
Okay. Thank you. I was just looking through this, and I just kind of raised the issue.
Again, I'll ask the same question. CEO, county council, are you in full agreement?
Yes, we're here to clarify the previous issue.
All right, thank you. With that, let's go ahead.
Oh, we've read this. I remember.
Go ahead and do a real one, sir. Supervisor Chabot?
Aye.
Supervisor Benley?
Yes.
Supervisor Lawrence?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? Aye.
Thank you again, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, we will come back to 2.3. Counsel, will you?
We have not read that before. We have not returned to the board.
Yes, so what's the, what would the Board like to do at this point?
Oh, sorry.
We're back on grand jury.
I thought she said-
We haven't heard anything. I'm with four, as you were saying.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept item 2.13 regarding the grand jury report from the Board of Supervisors with the suggested change of changing high to weak as presented, except for the change from high to weak.
Okay, discussion?
I would just also, in terms of Board direction for next year, make sure that the admin office reaches out to those Board members who would like, or need, just an update, refreshers, or new on the grand jury proceedings and procedure.
Follow-up, would that perhaps make the suggestion to CSAT? To offer some type of training?
Good idea.
Do you want to include, you might have missed it, Department heads?
Sure. Just as it follows with, we feel that we need a little-
As part of our ongoing training, I can ask personnel if they could do some executive training based on that, that subject.
And I assume that we don't have any authority to have, getting training for grand jury?
We do. We, we don't have the authority to get the grand jury trained. They do receive training from the California Grand Jury Association as part of the requirement. In addition, at the beginning of each term, they do request that certain individuals, such as County Council's office, come and do training. I believe ours is scheduled with them for October.
All right. Let's go ahead and make this a roll call also.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chappell?
No.
Supervisor Myers?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
You did say.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye. All right, thank you. And with that, the, we'll blow- So we'll go into closed session. Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Success in Existing Litigation Cases. One, Trinity County versus Moreno. And we also will be doing the McAllister, finishing up the McAllister briefs in that closed session. Any comments on closed session? Thanks, everyone, for coming. All right, reporting out of closed session. We are continuing the item of the grievance of Mr. McAllister to the next meeting. And we have given direction on the Moreno case. Adhere.